Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please remain standing for a moment of silence for Bruce Bott and all of those who have lost loved ones in the recent past? Thank you. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting in the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 9, 2023.
Such schedule and notice of meetings is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools, was submitted to the Daily Record for publication on January 13, 2023, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 11, 2023. I direct that this announcement be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Ms. Jones, roll call please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Benton?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. Wiener?
Here.
Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
And Dr. Gels.
Here. Just for the public, I have asked the board that we go into a closed session for no more than ten minutes, if it takes that long, so please bear with us. I would like to have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion to close session.
Second.
Second.
The board will go into closed sessions for matters of attorney-client privilege. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are... Any opposed?
No.
Any abstain?
No.
I thought I heard all nine. We're in closed session. We'll be right back, folks. We'll be right back, folks. The board is back in public session. We have a roll call, Ms. Jones.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Benton?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. Winnet?
Here.
Mr. Stolachi?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales?
Here. Let's see here. Can we have the approval of the minutes, Dr. Giordano?
Yes, recommendation, approval minutes, 3.1 to 3.3.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Say none, roll call.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Winnet?
We're on the threes, right? Yes to three, one and three two, abstain on three, three.
Mr. Stolachi?
Yes on one, two abstain on three.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes to three, one abstain on three, two and three, three.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jones, can I amend my vote? I should have stayed on three, three as well. I apologize.
Yes, thank you.
A little too quick.
Lost that?
Yep.
Okay. Communications and petitions. Superintendent members of the board, acknowledge any communications and/or petitions received. Dr. Banji, anything?
We have a letter from Mr. Martin Walzler that was received today, referencing our board contract and over.
Thank you very much. Nothing from me. Reports and discussions. Superintendent's report.
Nights like this, I get super excited because we are here to acknowledge some of our wonderful students. For everyone in the audience in present and at home, we have our Eagle Scouts in attendance, and we're going to recognize the wonderful work they have done. So I am going to ask each of these young men to stand up when I say your name, and our board president, Dr. Gales, is going to award you a certificate on behalf of the school district. And before I begin, I just want to reflect upon what a tremendous honor it is for our district to have these young men doing the quality work that they do, and not only in the sentiments of the Boy Scouts, but also adhering to our vision and mission as a district. You know, every single one of these young men committed, completed work for the betterment of our community, and that is certainly something that we can only hope for all of our students to do. So first, I would like to honor James Moore, if you can stand up. James is a current senior. He's going to be graduating this coming spring. He earned his Eagle rank on March 9 of 2022. James completed the trail restoration at Turkey Brook Park, which required meetings with the Mount Olive City management and Parks, Buildings and Ground members. Thank you so much, James. Next up, we have Michael Tierney. Come on up. Michael is also a current senior at Mount Olive High School, and he earned his Eagle rank on September 1 of 2022. Michael built bridges at Mill Pond Park in Long Valley, which required collaboration and leadership with the Washington Township officials. And next up, we have Richie Grandberg, who is a current junior at Mount Olive High School. He earned his rank on January 12 to 23, and he completed the paver walkway for the Knights of Columbus Council 5412 in the Flanders-Chaster area. And certainly, when you look at these three young men, as I pointed out, the common thread here is giving back to their community. And certainly, I also want to acknowledge the wonderful parents that we have here in audience. We certainly recognize, as a district and as a board, this is not only an individual initiative, this is something that you, as a family, also espouse and certainly provided the time and effort. So thank you for your work with your children, and once again, we can't be any more proud than for you. I'm going to come and give you a hug, so, sorry.
Oh, Dr. Banji, and once...
Oh, he's a good... Oh, he's one.
I love to see pictures. You know that.
That's why we're doing it.
Let the parent in.
No there. Thank you again.
There's also some other interesting presentations to complete. So next up, we are going to be actually having Dr. Grip, who completed our demographic study. He's going to be coming in virtually from the home state of, I believe, New Hampshire, right, Miss Vermont, sorry? And he's going to be showcasing the demographic study that he completed for the district about a month and a half ago, so welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I could be part of this tonight and share the results with all of you. I have a demographic study prepared, and I'm going to share my screen with you. Currently, I've been disabled, so if I can be re-enabled as a host, I'd appreciate that.
One second.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So you should be able to see this slide with the title page, demographic study for the Mount Olive School District, and our company is called Statistical Forecasting. And so that presentation will probably take about 20 minutes, maybe a little bit less, and I'll open it up to questions for the board at the end. So our firm has been doing this type of work for the last 25 years for school districts in the New York and Jersey metropolitan area. We worked with your district maybe about three years ago, right before the pandemic, so it's not our first opportunity to work with you. This is the only kind of work we do. It's a niche field called school demography, and we've done about 200 school districts in the New York and Jersey metropolitan area, and we've done all of the New York City public schools' demographic projections since 2006, which is the last 17 years. A little bit about myself, I'm the executive director. Director, I formed the company 25 years ago. I had a doctorate from Rutgers University in the Graduate School of Educational Statistics and Measurement. Most of us wound up working for the College Board, working with testing issues, but I decided to do a more applied approach, such as this, and I continue to publish on this peer-reviewed journalist, and have testified as an expert witness in administrative law court hearings in the state. So let's talk about the study. When we project enrollments, we project usually for a five-year period, and we don't project beyond that, and because we then start to project kids that haven't been born yet, which is very difficult. So when you see the purpose of the study tonight, we're looking at a five-year period from the '23-'24 school year through '27-'28. We also looked at the community's population trends, some demographic characteristics, and age structure, birth counts, and fertility rates. Then we looked at the school district and the enrollments historically over the last 10 years, not only district-wide, but by elementary, middle, and high school grade configuration. We got some information regarding new housing starts in Mount Olive, and we figured out how that is going to impact your enrollments. And the final thing that we did is we compared the building capacities at the grade configuration level to the current and projected enrollments in the school district. So Mount Olive currently has... This is a slide of Mount Olive's population over time, and you can see... And you can see that most of the growth in Mount Olive happened in the 1960s and the 1970s. It's kind of flattened out in more current times. So what you're looking at here in this chart, 2020, the population is almost 29,000 people in Mount Olive. So everything to the left of this vertical line right here is U.S. Census data going back from 1940. Everything to the right of this vertical line is the projected population of Mount Olive from a third party you can see called the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, and they project that the population of Mount Olive is going to be somewhere near 30,000 people by the year 2040. So when we look at the community's demographic profile, what's interesting is you're very similar to a lot of the mean and median values that are in the state of New Jersey. So when you look at some of these things here, you'll see that there's not much difference between yourself and the state. But what I can tell you is that, like many communities around the state, you're having a declining white population and increasing Asian and Hispanic populations, which is really not just a phenomenon around the state, but a national phenomenon, where we're having a more of an increase in population Hispanics. So you can see in 2020, here's the breakout of the race by white, Hispanic, and Asian. Of course, there's black and multirace, but I'm only showing them the three largest races. The median age is a little bit lower than the state, but pretty close. About 18% of your population is foreign-born, compared to the state average, around 23%. And they're coming mostly from India and Colombia. Those are the two largest sources. You're fairly educated community, 44% having a bachelor's degree or higher, which is slightly higher than the state. The median household income is slightly higher than the state, a little less than $100,000. And again, median means the 50th percentile, which means that half of the people, half of the households in Mount Olive have an income higher than $97,500 and a half, have a value lower. There's more than 11,000 housing units, of which about 60% are one-unit, single-family homes that could be either detached or attached, which would be like a townhouse. 40% of the units are rent or occupied, which is a little bit higher than that of the state. And at home, the median value of an owner-occupied unit is around $376,000, a little bit lower than the state. Here's the community. You can see the picture right here, all six schools, four elementaries, one middle, and one high. So when we look at your enrollment, we always look at the historical enrollments on the same date every year, and that's October the 15th. And that's the date that you report your enrollment to the state via NJ Smart. And as of the '22-'23 school year, this is back in October, your enrollment was 4,731 students right here. So when we look at that 10 years prior, which is the '13-'14 year, it really hasn't changed much, only, you know, about a gain of 103 students. So enrollments have been fairly stable before they increased in the last year, this current year. And we'll talk about that more in a moment. The Core Survival Ratio Method was the methodology we use to project enrollments five years into the future. So when you look at this picture here, this is your enrollments over time, P-K to 12. And you can see this bump up right here in the '22 year, and that's mostly because you expanded your pre-kindergarten program as well as having a little bit larger of a kindergarten class compared to prior years. But you can see, this has been fairly stable up until this past year. So this is a slide that looks at the enrollments, not at the total level, but the elementary, the middle, and the high school grade configuration. And you can see the elementary, which is the top line right here, was fairly stable up until this past year. Again, here's the PK, the kindergarten count group, which is about 144 students, more than the year prior. When we look at the middle school, you can see that the enrollments declined through the '17-'18 year before they reversed trend and stabilized. And for the high school, it's the reverse. Their enrollments more or less went up through 2017-'18 before stabilizing. So there's a little bit of nuances depending upon the elementary, middle, or high school grade configuration regarding enrollment trends. So this methodology that we use, called the Core Survival Ratio Method, is a methodology that's approved by the state of New Jersey. It's been around for probably close to 100 years now. And it's where we look at the progression rates of students from one grade to the next over time historically. And we assume that those historical progression rates are going to continue in the future. So I'll give you a really simple example. Say you have 100 first graders in the 2021 year, and in the next year, when they become second graders, you only have 95 of them. That's 95 over 100, or survival rate or progression rate of .95. So you lose five students in the net, either in and out of the district. But when you have values that are above one for ratios, that means you have inward migration. When you have values below one, like in this example I just showed you, you have outward migration. What's interesting about your district, we looked at your ratios for the last 10 years, and we always compute an average based on the last four or five years. Of the 13 possible average ratios, that's birth to kindergarten all the way up to 11th to 12th grade. Well, all of them were above one, which is indicating inward migration into the district. Usually, we see that in high-performing school districts because parents want to get their kids in a particular district. So we use these average ratios. We apply them to the most current enrollments in this current year to project the enrollments, assuming again that those ratios are going to hold constant over the next five years. You have a phenomenon in district called negative kindergarten first grade replacement. That's kind of been in each of the last nine years, where the values range from 3.5 students to a year to 133 students. What we usually do is we, and I'll explain what negative kindergarten replacement is, which is the third bullet. It's when the number of entering kindergarten students in a particular year is less than the number of graduating fourth-grade students from the prior year. So for instance, if you have 150 seniors graduating, to keep the enrollment balance in the district, you would need 150 kindergarten students entering the district to offset what's leaving. So if you have a negative kindergarten replacement, you don't have enough students entering to offset what's leaving. And that's what's been happening here. The reason why we also have it compared to first grade is instead of kindergarten is because you had a half-day kindergarten program prior to the 2020 school year. And it's more common to compare the 12th grade, outgoing 12th grade to incoming first grade in those years because you have a lot of parents that enroll their child for first grade rather than kindergarten. So with the exception of the pandemic years in the last couple of years, the kindergarten replacement magnitudes haven't been very large, even fairly small, which basically means that the sizes of the entering and exit grades are fairly similar. And that's what I'm referring to here, that there's really not much of a difference, even in this most recent year. About a couple of these years in the pandemic years, you've had some really big differences because you didn't have enough kindergarten students coming into the district because a lot of parents withheld their kids during COVID. When districts were going remote or hybrid, a lot of them either were being sent to private peripheral schools or they either had to relocate. So when we compare how your enrollment has changed annually for the last 10 years with respect to this phenomenon called kindergarten first grade replacement, what's really interesting is that, let me just show you some of the data right here where my arrow is. You see this negative 133 for the negative kindergarten replacement? Well, the actual enrollment change in the district was only a decline of roughly 56 students. And that's pretty much the case in all these, except for the '15-'16 year down here, where the negative kindergarten replacement is being offset either partially or totally due to this inward vibration of students that you're having in the district. So even though you have this phenomenon called negative kindergarten replacement, a lot of it's being taken care of and offset by people moving in to the community. So to project kindergarten students, we use birth counts five years prior. Now, of course, a lot of kids that are born in your community might leave within that five-year period, but we do find there's a good correlation between births and then kindergarten students five years later. So we looked at the data from the 2008 to 2021 year, and the birth counts were fairly stable since 2011, ranging from 249 to 311 births per year. When we look at the endpoints of that time period, the births were a little lower in 2021 compared to 2008, about 45 births fewer, which is shown in this picture. You can see between 2008 and 2011, they were declining, but since then, it's been fairly stable, which is another reason why your enrollment's been fairly stable because this is a bigger, this is a big driver of what your enrollment would be, is stable birth rates for stable kindergarten counts. So this is a little chart here showing you your births from 2008 to 2021, how many kindergarten students come five years later, and then what's the survival rate of kindergarten students to births. In black, I'm showing you what the ratios were in the half-day program. Once you switch to full day, in a district like yours, you're not going to see values below one very often. They're typically going to be above one. But the problem was, you started the full-day program in the first year of the pandemic. So this data point right here, that .914, is not really a good data point. We did not even use it going forward in projecting your enrollments. We feel that this 1.2 value and maybe 1.02 are better indicators of what's going to happen in the future. So when we look at your population of Mount Olive by age, this is what's called an age-sex pyramid for Mount Olive in 2010. That's the census part of the one we just had wrapped up. What we're looking at is the percentages of males in orange, plotted back-to-back in green for those who are females. And what we see here is that in 2010, your largest groups for males was 45 to 49, and for females was 40 to 44. Now, when we advance it about 10 years, we would expect, if everyone stays in place, the largest cohort would be the next age class up. But in your case, it's not. Now, we don't have the data yet for the 2020 census, believe it or not, even though it's three years ago. Due to pandemic, they've been slow to release. But you can see here, the largest group for males is 30 to 34, for females is 35 to 39. And this is from a data point called the American Community Survey, otherwise known as ACS, from 2016 to 2020. It does not represent a single year, but a conglomeration of five years put together. And that's why it doesn't look so pretty compared to the previous diagram. So if we look at how males and females have changed over time, the biggest gainers for males have been 30 to 34 group, and for females, the 60 to 64 group. But the biggest decliners for males and females are people in their 40s. Why do we look at this? Well, we like to look at this to see if you're a community that's getting younger or women having more children of childbearing age. So one thing we see here is that you have, look at the female population and males, there's a lot of gaining going on of people in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. And that's indicative of a growing population, which isn't going to generate as many births. This is an interesting slide showing you the approved and proposed new housing in the township, Mountain Ridge. This reflects the number of units plenty that are near, that need to be completed and occupied. The total development is 323 units, but about 187 COs have been issued for the townhouses, and additional 46 are occupied for the apartments. How many total crossings is almost 500 units. That has not been approved yet. I'm not sure if it is now. We wrapped up the study two months ago. Things can change rapidly. They said it could be approved in early 2023. And then there's two very small developments of single-family homes, one being an habitat for humanity project. But we're looking at around 600-plus housing units still left. And this is a lot, a lot of these affordable units that you can see in this chart are based upon the township's fair share, the agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center, which is a settlement agreement, to build affordable housing in Mount and downtown Olive. So we computed how many students that we could estimate, that we could project from those housing units. And we got the number of students estimates from Rutgers University. In other words, how many students can we expect out of a single-family home, an apartment, a townhouse, based upon the veteran distribution? Those values were from Rutgers University. And we estimate around 343 public school children. And we consider it a rough estimate because two of the developments have not been approved. And sometimes they change in scope before they're approved, or maybe they don't come to fruition. But right now, we're estimating, we'll round it up, around 350 children. So we estimated, we took those estimates, and we adjusted the baseline enrollment projections to account for those additional kids. And we'll talk about that in the slides coming up. One driver of inward vibration in a community is home sales. And you can see in Mount Olive that the number of home sales peaked around the 2003-04 period and four declining in the late 2000s due to the housing market crash and banking crisis. And then you can see up to this period now, 2021, you've almost had 400 sales, which eclipsed the peak back in 2003 and '04. Very strong housing market. My expectation just got cool with the interest rates going up. So you can see that in the last four or five years, you had a very, very strong housing market. And I'm sure that's leading to inward vibration because it's mostly going to be families with kids that are moving in. This shows you where most of the home sales are in Mount Olive from the '16 to '21 period. We aggregated them at what's called the Census Block Level, a really small geography you can see. And the darkest blue are where the greatest number of sales are in the township over that time period. So we did project your enrollments for a five-year period, which I mentioned. But what I didn't tell you at the outset, we did two steps of projection. One, we refer to as baseline. Baseline means we don't take into consideration the new housing because a lot of things can happen. It may not come online when we think it might come online, or things that we were hoping to get approved may not get approved. So the second method is what's called the Adjusted for Housing Growth Projection, which assumes that all the proposed approved housing gets constructed, not only gets constructed, but gets constructed in the next five years in the enrollment projection timeframe. So the baseline projections are projecting 49, 24 students in the '27-'28 school year, which would be a gain of roughly 200 students. And the other model is showing 5,100 students five years out, which would be a gain of 369 students. So when we look at this at the elementary, middle, and high school configuration for baseline and adjuster, you can see that either, no matter what we look at, these values at the bottom here are all blue, which are indicating that you're expecting a gain regardless of the configuration and regardless of whether it's the baseline model or the adjusted for housing growth. But of course, if it's adjusted for housing growth, the values are much higher than the baseline because of all the new housing starts. So lastly, we do a comparison of your enrollments to the current enrollments, to the capacity in the elementary, middle, and high school grade configurations. And the capacities are not hard and fixed value. They're based upon how you're using the buildings currently and what your teacher-student ratios are approved by the board. It's a calculation computed in your long-range facility plan by your architect. And you may be wondering why the, we're showing it by grade configuration for elementary and not by individual school. We were not hired to project the enrollments by elementary school in this iteration, so that's why it's being shown that way. But you can see that right now, you have a shortfall of almost 200 seats at the elementary level. And that's going to get worse over time. This projected enrollment column down here is the adjusted for housing growth. Consider it the worst-case scenario. In each of the scenarios, in each of the projections here for elementary, middle, and high, you can see in the end of the five-year period, you're projected to have a shortage of seating. Right now, the middle school and the high school do not. They have a small surplus of seating. But the new housing starts increasing enrollment is probably going to change that. So lastly tonight, I'll just mention what COVID has had an effect on enrollments across the country. I do a lot of work up and down the Northeast Corridor. I live in Vermont now. I've lived here quite some. now. I've lived here quite some time. After years of having enrollment decline, Vermont's actually had some increased enrollments, people moving here from the New York, New Jersey metropolitan area into their second homes, of all our second homeowners up here. You can see this third vote, some places around the country have had really large enrollment declines. Where I worked in New York City, I think they had an enrollment decline of 38,000 students. So the real quick, good question, and you can, you hear it in the news every day, are people going to have to work in an office anymore? That's really one of the big drivers here because really, people don't have to live where they work anymore, or unless a lot of people don't. And that's the question. Is that going to continue? Are people going to stay in their second homes? Are they going to go back into suburbia? Are they going to go back into the cities? I don't know. We've been trying to track data on it, but unfortunately, the data just doesn't come out as quickly as we'd like it. This is showing how the population changed in the U.S. from the pandemic, April 2020, which is roughly around when it started in March 2020, to a year and a half later. The values in green are the big gainers, and the magentas are the big decliners. So you can see that the middle of the country has lost a lot of folks after the pandemic, where the rest have gained. New Jersey, not so much. We're going to go a little closer to New Jersey. It's same time period. You can see Morris County had a small gain of less than about 5,000 persons. But really, what's been interesting in New Jersey is a lot of people left right down the I-95 turnpike corridor. Hudson County was the biggest decliner. The biggest gainer was Ocean County. So those people, I can tell you, this is some, some anecdotal data, though. It's true. They, they went to their second homes down by Long Beach Island, and that's where they stayed. So what's the summary for tonight? That, first of all, your enrollments are projected to go up in the next five years. And that's a, that's a change in trend because you really had stable enrollment for quite some time. But I attribute that for a couple of reasons. First of all, you have this inward migration of families. And that's evident because 12 or 13 average ratios that we talked about are above one. And that's common in really good school districts. And the second piece is that you have a lot of new housing units coming online. And some have been built just historically in the recent last couple of years. And those people are starting to bring their kids in. And they may not have an immediate impact on your district right away, because if they had children under the age of five, you're starting to see them now. So that is my part of the presentation. But again, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Grip. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes. Dr. Grip, you hear me?
Yeah, perfectly.
My name is Tony Stralaci. We will be going out for referendum this year. So of course, one of the tools we use are demographic studies. My belief in demographic studies, though, is it a guide, it's a guide and not a bible. Because your demographic study consists of factual data, data, and assumption data. And then you have to interpolate and come up with your mathematical figures. But I, first, my first question to you is, how you determine the capacity? You, you hit, you went on a little bit on it, but I'd like a little bit more. How you can turn the capacity of a school?
Great question. So there are two different ways to compute capacity. Again, I'm, I'm not going to pass the buck, but this is not my area. This is the architect's part. I can, I know enough about it where I can tell you. The first methodology is called District Practices. So if, I'm just going to make it really simple. So say you're in an elementary, in an elementary building, you have 20 classrooms. And your board's policy is, well, we're not going to educate more than 25 children in a, in a regular classroom for regular education. So 20 times 25, we yield a capacity of 500. However, as you know, your building has other purposes than regular education. It may have small group instruction or gifted and talented special education. So those rooms cannot hold 25 children. They may only have 10. So based upon how the building is being used will then change how the capacity is being calculated. So if you, if your long-range facility plan, so I got these values from your facility plan from 2016. So if things change over time with your capacities and how you're using it, these numbers can, can change either up or down. So if you have less small, a small group instruction rooms year to year, these, these numbers can go up. The other way you can compute capacity is something called Facility Efficiency Standards Recommended Class Sizes. That's by the state of New Jersey. They're basically saying, in an elementary classroom, we recommend, I would say, 21 children per classroom. And you can derive your capacity that way. These capacities that you're showing, we're showing in this table are from the District Practices method. So it really reflects how you are using the building. So that's how, that's a long, hopefully that wasn't too long of a story. But that's how we, we get to this, this value of capacity. And I always tell districts, you know, you really need to have your, your architects look at how you're using the building almost semi, every, every other year, because these capacity values can really change depending upon how you're using the building.
I would agree that there are certain mitigating factors on, yes, the, the amount of space being able to use is by special ladder, by if we put a ladder or something like that. I looked at your 219 study, and I compared it to the 222 study. In 219, you, for the, this current, this current year, in 19, you projected PK at 2,092 students. Yet right now, we're at 2,153. I'm giving you these figures because I, I have to, in my mind, understand where we're going to go with this referendum. In six, in 2022, in your 19 study, your six to eight was 1,090. We're at 1105. And we went down in 912 to 1473. If you take it out to your 27, 28 year, and I total all of your figures up for those three levels, we'll be at 5,100 students. When we built our schools, we built a high school to hold, this is what we built them to hold. Now, things have changed. We built them to hold 1,600 students. We built the middle school to hold 1,400. We had at one point, 925 students at the middle school, but I'm only budgeting 700 in the year. We had 750 at Mountain View. I'm only budgeting 600. And I'm leaving 450 and 450 at Tins Road in San Antonio. That's 5,200 students. So in my mind, I have to keep saying to myself, where are we going to do this building? But what's alarming me is that because of the fact that this is not a scientific study, but a combination of both, here it is, you're, you're projecting in your 22 study, for the year 24 to 25, in the 2019, you projected PK at 2,061, and now you're projecting 2,207, and so on and so forth. So I'm looking at fluctuating numbers here, and I'm not sure how valid I can rely on this demographic study.
Well, see, here's, there's two things that, essentially a couple of things that happened. So when that study was done three years ago, you, you changed policy. When you change policy, all bets are off on an enrollment projection study. And the policy you changed, you went from half-day to full-day. And the second thing you did, you expanded your pre-kindergarten program. There's no way we could possibly account for those things prior to when you made those policy changes. And then you can throw in the third thing, which is COVID.
Well, we all agree that we're going to have our greatest influx in elementary. That's what we're looking at in the referendum also. But, you know, I just, in my mind, I wish I had a better handle on, on being able to say that those are going to be close to the figures that we're looking at when, they're way out of whack now.
Well, if you look at the--
And pardon me, but yes, we had more kindergarten students. But we had a half a day and a half a day. We still had almost the same amount of students coming. Maybe, yes, we gained more because more people sent their kids to our school for that. But kindergarten alone has not raised the figure that all that much for all our kindergartens. And, and basically, I feel that we can house and seat 2,300 students in our elementaries. And that's where you're, you're at 2,310 in your 27, 28 projection.
Well, currently, you are, you are seating 2,153 students right now. And your capacity is 200 seats larger than that. So you are able to do it. I don't know which buildings are feeling the tighter restrictions compared to one over the other. But, you know, the point of the matter is, is this 200 seats spread over four buildings, if we average that, it's only 50 seats per building. And that's something a school district can definitely live with. Let's, let's be clear. You're living with it right now.
Well, the point I'm bringing up is, when we come up with this referendum, we have to take it to the public. And we have to demonstrate a need to them, not just say, well, we want to do this, we want to do that. And your, your instrument becomes a big tool for me.
Absolutely. And that's why we're, you know, the key here is to show, I mean, my, my feeling to the public is showing that in these, this last calendar year, the enrollment growth over time really starts to pick the scales in a direction where you're, you're going to be having some really tight issues across the board.
Dr. Grip, this is Dr. Banjia. I just wanted to make a comment. I think, you know, certainly my takeaway of your study when you look at that slide as well as, I believe, the next slide, in which you taught, or the slide before, talking about the enrollment projections by grade configuration. I, I think, you know, at the end of the day, when you look at this, regardless of what you project as baseline or adjustment, and to your point about inward migration, that our district is expanding, which is unlike a lot of our surrounding districts, that in which they are suffering from declining enrollment. And, you know, certainly however you want to cut it, really at the end of the day, that it seems as though that the space that we currently have in our buildings is, when you project five years from now, is not going to be sufficient for the student population that we're going to be most likely inheriting, really at the end of the day. Is, is that a correct, just a generalization?
Yeah.
I'd like to add one more thing, though, just to, my, my point of trying to illustrate. In your 2019 demographic study, Mountain Ridge was going to yield 87 students. In 2022, it's going to yield 43. ITC Crossing, which has now changed the name, was going to be 319. Now it's going to be 281. Which is it?
Well, we have different cohorts. So first of all, with, with Mountain Ridge, the reason why the number has gone down is because they've filled out some of those units in the last three years. So you're only seeing the number that we're projecting that are not, that are not occupied. So the other value for ITC, we got more clarified information in the last three years to here, based on the bedroom distribution, which we didn't have three years ago. So with that, we were able to refine the numbers a little better. That's why.
Mr. President, Dr. Grip, this is Anthony Giordano. Can you go back to the, the slide before this about the, no, I'm sorry, Ford. No, boy, hold on. Right there, capacity analysis. Thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand right, because I'm, I'm not the brightest person on this dais. You based this capacity analysis, or our architect does, on 2016. Yeah, thank you.
Long-range facilities.
Long-range facilities plan. I just had a brain freeze. Thank you. So, so really, that long-range facilities plan, you know, should be updated every five years. Obviously, COVID, we're a little bit behind on that. So really, this could change that. So when, you know, we update that, and architect goes back in, takes a real hard look, all these numbers, you know, could, could, could be changed. And we, because I can guarantee you that, I'll bet that I'm never going to go here again, that our buildings are, are being utilized for our specialized programs that we're getting more and more of. And I know Dr. Banjia and, and, and everyone can talk about that. But, so we, we might actually not even have the capacity that this capacity analysis is showing us. We might have less.
Right. Now, as part of the referendum process, did you have to update your LRFP with the state?
Yeah.
Mr. Giacoufaro has done that. What we're waiting on right now is confirmation of the student count numbers from the state. They haven't updated their part yet. So they're supposed to be doing that this month. But that is one of the key pieces that we need to move forward.
And my point being, thank you for that. My point being, though, when, when you did this study, you based it upon a 2016 long-range facilities, and everything could change that. Because we, I, I, like I said, I almost guarantee you, our, we're utilizing those classrooms, those small specialized classroom spaces, a lot more in those buildings. So I just wanted to, thank you very much for this.
Can I, can I also ask a question or maybe make a statement? When you look at the projections of the new housing, I forgot what slide that was. I believe it's slide 21. You know, certainly when you look at these figures, you stated that those, I think, it's, am I wrong? It's like a chart. Is it that, that, that one right there? When you look at the projected houses associated with this, you know, this goes looking at bedroom counts, correct?
Yes.
Right. And, you know, just to put it out there, some of these other projects that had been implemented, they also have dens. And, you know, and what we have found out from an anecdotal standpoint is, while a particular housing unit does not have, say, it says two-bedroom plus den, a lot of families are actually utilizing that as three bedrooms. However, because of the, you know, requirements which you work under, right, you could only look at it as two bedrooms. So I also believe that some of these numbers are more on a conservative side as opposed to what actually happens in implementation of, you know, who actually ends up living there in those spaces. So I think, you know, as far as the projections are a little conservative as opposed to the families who end up moving there and utilizing that, you know, that den as another bedroom, a nursery, when you look at it, that you're unable to do so in your official counts.
That's correct. It's not just dens. There's, there's some of these things that have lofts. It's the same--
Basements.
Yeah. So we just look at the vendors, whether it has a den or loft, we exclude
Are there, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. See, none. Thank you, Dr. Grip.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too.
All right. Bye-bye.
We have an eventful evening. We have another presentation. So I'm sure everyone's excited. I'm equally excited about our next presentation. We're going to be reviewing our Start Strong data. And we have Mr. Matt Robinson, who's going to be sharing the data with us. Matt Robinson is not only our Director of Elementary Education, he's also our Acting Assistant Superintendent. So thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Robinson.
My pleasure. And that's going to be a tough act to follow, but I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and review the data. If we can just get the slideshow pulled up, that'd be perfect. So just a little bit about Start Strong. What you really need to know about Start Strong is, it's essentially a state-designed benchmark assessment. It's given over like a 45-minute period in one sitting. And it's the same kids who took the NJSLA with the same standards. So you've got ninth graders taking eighth-grade standards, but they also were tested on eighth-grade standards in eighth grade last year. So when you take a look at the data, it's incredibly similar. So we're going to run through that briefly, and we'll get that started super soon. Really, really soon.
If it doesn't work, it's okay.
No, no. And, and as we wait for this--
Dr. P already saw this, so.
So as we wait for this, one of the things I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Robinson, is that, you know, initially, the Start Strong test was supposed to be a one-year test in order to, you know, meet the federal standards, right? And now, for, for the people at home and in the audience, you know, do we believe that this test is going to be something that we're going to see for school years to come? Or--
Where are we starting? I'm unsure.
Yeah.
Quite frankly. We, I remember getting a memo from the state in August saying that we were going to take this this year in October. And we really had to scramble and get all of our data over to the state incredibly quickly. So--
And that's the answer that we're really looking for, because, and that's, because at this point, the state has not been necessarily clear as whether or not this assessment is going to be a staple aspect of what we're going to be doing. So certainly--
Right.
You know, while we have two years of data for this assessment, you know, is it here to stay? And really, it's serving as, Mr. Robinson pointed out, different purposes than what we had talked about with the NJSLA presentation back in December.
Absolutely. And, you know, to, to your point, we're going to maintain our, the robust menu of benchmark assessments that we already have in district, because that's what we're really leveraging. And we're also taking a really deep dive into the NJSLA data that I shared 85 slides with, worth of, with you in December with all of our building admins right now. So Sheen, feel free to go ahead. Okay, so we start with our, our district goals. Go ahead. And this is district goal one, provide the most innovative and safe learning environment possible for the entire district community. possible for the entire district community. Go ahead. You can just keep clicking through, Shane, it's fine. So the Start Strong is based on a subset of prioritized prior-year academic standards. Like I mentioned earlier, these kids took this test in October, based on standards that they learned the previous year. They were given an ELA in grades four through 10, math four through eight, with Algebra I, geometry in Algebra II, and science grades six, eight, and nine. And we know the NJSLA is given in grades five, eight, and 11 for science. 45 to 60 minutes, immediate results to educators, and we use the same accommodations for this as we do for the NJSLA as well. Go ahead. Go ahead. So there are three performance levels. Strong support may be needed, those for your, there are for your students who, you know, underperformed and, you know, may need the most support. Some support, they're in the middle, and less support may be needed, meaning that they were meeting these standards. And they're designed to aid educators and families in making decisions about the types of support students may need. And we use this in concert with all of the local benchmarks that we administer in Mount Olive as well. You can go ahead. And just the testing windows, as I mentioned, October 3rd through 7th at the elementary in the high schools, and then the following week in the middle school. Can go ahead, we're going to look at ELA. So this was the ELA breakdown in grades four through 10, along with, at the far right, our ELA breakdown for all grades. So you can see 23% of our students were at the strong support may be needed, 22 in some support, and I believe that's 58 at, at the highest level. Can go ahead. Take a look at our subgroups, like we did for the NJSLA. Again, we see that our performance was very similar. Our Asian students, it was 74%, less support needed, 48 for our black students, 43 for Hispanic, 60 for multiple, and then 54 for our white. And your numbers, your actual student numbers are in the line graphs there, along with your N counts at the bottom. We see the female-to-male disparity again in ELA on this test, just like we did on NJSLA. And then we have our distribution by support levels, for free reduced lunch, 504, ELLs, special education, and then general education. We see that our ELLs, you know, didn't fare as well on this assessment as their counterparts, you know, in other subgroups. So in every level except fourth, 50% or more students were in the less support may be needed category, which is, which is, it's good. Subgroup performance, MERS performance on the NJSLA, as mentioned previously. For math, you see the breakdown as well, and we can take a look at math in all grades. And it's, it's relatively tied between the different performance levels, but you have to take into account, the, you know, the eighth grade math performance is similar to what we saw on the NJSLA. The Algebra I performance is down on the end, was down on the NJSLA as it is here, and then Algebra I in high school is down as well, and then those numbers rebound in your higher level courses. For our subgroups, again, our, our Asian students performed well. Our, our black students were at 24%, Hispanic at 23, our multiple students at, I believe that says 38. And then we see our white students also at 38. Male and female are obviously, they were closer in math on NJSLA, and they are here too. The levels are relatively similar. Again, we take a look at our programs, free reduced lunch, 504, ELLs, special education, and gen ed, and we find that our special education students did not fare as well on math as they did on the ELA assessment. And then student performance on elementary math standard outpaces performance on secondary standards until we reach the more advanced topics, like I mentioned earlier. Our grade eight and Algebra I students are, need the most support, but they are getting this via a lot, a different menu of supports that are being provided at the high school in the academic intervention environment. And again, we find our demographic breakdowns that recent program subgroups perform very similarly on Start Strong, as they did on NJSLA. For science, we had grade six, grade nine, and grade 12, again, based on the previous grade level standards. And we saw that the grade eight standards dip that we saw on NJSLA for grade nine. Again, these are the same kids taking questions on the same standards, and then you see your science all grades there. Go ahead. Okay, we see our demographics breakdown there. Female and male, we found that, again, these are relatively close numbers. And then we saw the issue that we saw on the NJSLA with our ELL and special education students on this science test. So just like on the NJSLA, student performance dips for eighth grade and then rebounds for 11th. Our special ed and ELL students are, are our focal point in terms of analyzing the language of the questions and engaging with NJSLA-style questions before the assessments administered. I'm going to be working with Lincoln on this a lot next year, trying to make sure that we're, we're benchmarking this and tracking progress so that we can intervene and boost performance, like we do for ELA and math currently. And then in the appendix, you'll be able to see the actual tables where the numbers are broken down. I just presented the charts to you this evening, because they're a little more viewer-friendly. And does anyone have any questions about the Start Strong performance? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Dr. Banjia, is that it?
Enough, right? Unless I can keep going.
That was some very good information. Thank you. Thank you very much. So moving on to personnel, Mrs. Wimmet.
We met on 2/26, Personnel Committee, myself, we're the attendees, Mr. Quino, Dr. Gill, Mr. Zaire, Dr. Badja, and Dr. Kreider. There was, what we discussed was updating job descriptions to reflect current responsibilities. This is pretty much across the board, and a lot of the feedback was gotten from our PISA, which we were able to make those changes of what, updates of what we needed to. Another one we did discuss was PD, Professional Development for Dual Language Learners, because there are workshops offered by the DOE, and we do provide PD ready for dual language. Let's see, and I think that was pretty much everything. We talked about PD for staff and exploring and focusing on ELL populations in eight for professional development. Anything else? Did I miss anything? I have the.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Moving right along, curriculum and technology, Mrs. Quino.
Yes, we met on February 6th, and present were myself, Dr. DeJette, DeJette, whatever their name is.
Holy, holy.
I'm Toot Sire. Dr. Banjia, Mr. Robinson, Mr. Kramer, Miss Soufley, and some of the topics that we discussed was the middle school sports. Looking at the very, very beginning part of just looking into having some, shifting some of that and kind of hybrid, a hybrid approach to sports with some maybe interscholastically. We also looked at the Mount Olive High School Program of Studies, including general level classes. There was a wide range there, and we sat and went through every class that's offered. We also went through the student handbooks. Dr. Banjia and Mr. Robinson expressed the need for standardizing the student handbooks that are readily available to students and parents. They're going to work with administration to develop these handbooks, and the board will approve them moving forward. And we also sat through a little bit longer presentation of the Start Strong results that Mr. Robinson just presented to the board this evening.
That's it?
That's all for that, yes.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Zaire, Finance and Operations.
Yes, so Finance and Operations met on Monday, February 6th. In attendance were Dr. Banjia, James Creepy, Gail Libby, Pamela Agnes, Mr. Schlocci, Mrs. Wimmet, Mr. Zaire, and Mrs. Narcisse, and our architect team of Mr. Jean, Anthony Jean Ficaro and Matthew Jean Ficaro. On the facility side, the team met with the district architect, architect and potential bidders for the next phase of CMS. They also negotiated $11,000 rebate from Dascal Incorporated for the CMS Cafeteria 4, which was to address the shoddy work done in the Phase 1 project. They are working to fill the potholes around the district. The high school rekeen project is about 99% complete. The bathroom scan project to high school, gateways are online, key scan software has been updated. The locks were put online, they'll be putting input of the student data. Barring any issues, the system besides the six staff locks will be operational by February 27th. Facility is getting quotes to replace a failed sewage pump at the Building 2 Board Office. They met with Nationwide to go over their move to Epix, space on the second floor, as Epix will be moving out. This will begin on April 1st. As Nationwide continues to grow inside our buildings, parking may be coming issue, and discussions are being had to address. Still looking for substitute students, so if anybody knows of anybody, please make sure that they reach out to the district. We're also looking to prepare the electric pulse heat in the board office, so we're procuring quotes for that. We went to, still went to a mall management workshop, a theme webinar, and this one, the best one for last on the facility side, is after several months of hard work and red tape, a grant was procured for COVID response, and the district received about $445,000. So, Mr. Miller, stick around.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Speaking of security, 151 summonses were issued for passing a stop school bus. We are not learning. This, of course, requires a certain math power. Just so you know, we are providing the discovery for both those, for those individuals and their attorneys, for each one of those summons that they desire. One court session was held in January, and 134 cases were heard. And out of those 134 cases, 100% were found guilty. So kudos to the security and also the bus drivers for collecting that information. $32,106 collected in fines by township. We talked about the review and the dissemination of bark and gaggle alerts throughout the district. One, there were 89 bark and 68 gaggles. Out of that were five that received next-level intervention. So I understand that some people are not big fans of this program, but they do help, and I can speak through working in another school district, that they really do take some of the worry away. I don't even know how to express it. Three resident investigations are near completion, be ready for submission. This will give us a cost savings to the district. Various fire drills and security checks were done and successfully done throughout the district as well over the next month. Here's a great one, six students have been caught for vaping within the high school. I cannot address the problem that vaping is becoming in the high school. One of the biggest concerns is they are throwing the cartridges into the plumbing, which is causing a physical impact onto the district as we have to replace these pumps. I would ask everybody to do their due diligence to address this with their, their children, to ensure that there is no disruption, first to the physical aspects of the district, to the interruption of the educational atmosphere. I know many of the board members on this committee are pushing forward and looking to have a higher level of progression of, or natural progression of accountability. It's not being, it's not helping, but I think we'll get there. So there may be a financial, discussions are being held about a financial implication. We reviewed BTAM reports just wide on the district-wide radio project. MLPD has completed their testing period. We got the green light to install our equipment. This was discussed at the last board meeting, that they were just giving that testing period, and our vendor emailed us asking status completion date for our system, as well as the next step. Are we emailing our vendor? All right, transportation, looking still to address the various issues that are hindering our, our district's best performance. These issues are putting a large burden on departments to coordinate trips on top, on top of regular scheduled school routes and programs. On the brighter side, there were successful runs to JFK for the exchange students, so thank you for that. Our buses did pass inspection, so thank you to our mechanics. And the gatekeeper camera system continues to work well for our needs, as previously stated, and replaces some of the front-facing cameras as well underway. The vendor is working with us, and we have also held back the last payment to ensure that these last-minute items get fixed. Discussion items of the facilities is we talked about the use of rod grants for funding facility projects. Rod grants, the NJSDA, NJDOE, announce upcoming three, it's a grant program for regular operating districts, and we're hoping to use a lot of those funds for our upcoming referendum. Another discussion point was the excessive open requests and the impact to the business offices. As an example, one recent request, which totals 66 actionable items, would cost the district 93 hours of manpower at approximately $7,385,011. So as a district that is being hindered by this, we are going to implement a financial recovery to ensure that our district can work effectively and make sure that the person, the Freedom of Information Act is abided by. We discussed the 630 and 22 financial statements. We discussed professional service RFPs. As, several vendors are coming up on January 1st, 2024. We'll be looking to send out more RFPs to ensure that we get the best quality service and best physical benefit. So that will be kind of let our vendors know there. Action items today is to approve the RS School proposal, which will unify the calendar for school and vendor activities at all district facilities, and help to ensure billing for supplementary services. And we are going again, and propose, are trying to approve another contract with, I believe, Warren County this time for bus services, where the board expects that all proper measures are taken to ensure the due process is given to our bus drivers, and is put in place as a safety net to ensure that our students are able to get to their activities. That is all I have. Wow. I used to mock this little measure. Go ahead, Mr. Giordano.
I have a question, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Zaire. So I just want to make clear on, on the security, number one, letter C, $32,160 that was collected by the township, we have not seen a dime of that, they keep it all? Do you want to clarify that for the record?
Yes.
Yes, I just want to hear Mr. Zaire say it, thank you.
You want me to say?
Yes.
I think I was like.
Due date, Ms. Libby, what is the exact total? Do we have just a rough estimate of what the township has collected?
Do you have that number?
Just top of your head, 200, 100,000, 150,000?
More than that.
The number 240 times 14, 65. They've, the township has put something out, and they prosecuted 1,465 cases, and usually a fine that the judge sets are is about $240, so whatever that is.
About $351,000.
So since we implemented cameras on our buses, the township has collected 300 some thousand dollars. I just want the, the record to stand, and just put that on the record. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments?
But I think we are working, right? There are proposals, so.
We're in conversations.
Conversations.
Conversations are always good. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment. It's probably not going to go over well, but I just want to make a comment, just make it a comment. I just want to say that back in the day, my high school, which I'm not going to release, had a smoking sector. Yes. That I may or may not have partaken in, and I'm just saying, um, listen.
That was called the 70s, Ms. Quino.
I was about to say, they actually started putting labels on cigarettes, saying that they're bad.
Okay, all right.
That's all, that, you know, maybe.
Right, absolutely.
We are a tobacco and drug-free zone, so there is no longer permitted, so.
Law laws.
Yeah.
Law laws and statute and code.
I was about to say, there is a statute, a criminal statute, that you are not allowed to consume tobacco products.
I understand that. I was just trying to say, back in the day.
They chiseled yours on the tablet.
Okay, all right.
Moving on.
Are there, are there any board subcommittee reports? Mrs. Narcisse.
I did participate in the board meeting for the Educational Services Commission in Morris County. Majority of the conversation was with regards to their dwindling population as more districts, such as ours, are taking on the responsibility of housing their own special needs students, as well as the parent choice of other schools that are out there. So that was the majority of the meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Any other subcommittee reports?
Me.
Do we have, okay, I was going to. Do we have, okay, I was gonna...
If you can hear me, ouch. Jeanne O'Neil, is that good? From CPAC, hi. Our meeting, I just wanted to remind everyone, because we changed it, it was supposed to be tomorrow, but we changed it to Thursday for Valentine's Day, so happy Valentine's Day, everybody. And our meeting is going to be at 6:30 with some of the best buddies, is to highlight some of our best buddies and what they get from being best buddies and why they do it. And so, I'm excited for that. And we would also like to request further information on the Start Strong assessments and why the numbers look the way they do, or what's, what we can talk about it. We did just send Dr. Kreider, there's a, the fifth annual Innovations in Special Education Technology conference coming up in March, that looked interesting, and that seems like maybe an option. And also, again, we just want to say how we value our aides and need our aides, and our kids need our aides, so I'm begging that everyone fights for our aides to stay so that we don't lose more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board?
I couldn't agree more with that last statement.
Are there any other parent organizations?
Yep. Hi, I'm Jen Shortino from Man Olive High School Parent Club. So, we had our, our last meeting was in January on the 24th, and Mr. Stansberry very eloquently stood in for Mr. Moore, gave a great presentation, and also had invited some rising freshman parents to the meeting. So, they were able to sit in and listen, and we had representatives from a couple of different clubs there who spoke, and our student council reps, Seeabawa and Brianna Wells-Miller, gave great updates on the school activities that were going on, the sports activities, and the things that the student council is up to. The reps we had were from Best Buddies. We had Alexa Udoff and Samantha Frangione, and we had the ASL club, Julia Capitula and Marisha Shelton, and we had reps from Students Taking Action, Larissa King, and I wasn't, and Johnny, yeah, Johnny Narcisse, who came and spoke. Dr. Banja came and introduced herself to our crowd, I guess, and what was great is she answered a lot of questions for the rising freshman parents, so it was a really good back-and-forth that they had. And we had Mr. Feltman, who rounded us out with his presentation on scheduling and curriculum requirements, which a lot of the rising freshman parents were really interested in as to what their kids could expect. And then, this past weekend, Parent Club, we hosted a concession stand for a competition that was going on at the high school to raise money, and we did, we did really great, and we had some really good volunteers, actually students. We had Manny Boltla, she was there all three days, so she was awesome. Brandon Castillo was there, Elizabeth Coyle volunteered, Sarah Shortino was voluntold to come, so she was there. And she dragged her friend Amethyst Garcia to help out on Sunday. So, our next up for us is we're going to be doing our senior lawn sign fundraiser. So, an email will go out to all the senior parents for around March 1st. So, there'll be three opportunities to order from March, April, and May, but hopefully anybody who has a senior will order a sign. And our next meeting is March 21st, and we hope to have a speaker come and talk about mental health, because that seems to be a very big topic for everybody. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Thank you for attending.
Yeah, no problem. I attended the meeting. One of the things I wanted to bring up, and the students were talking about with the committees, especially with the ASL, you do not have to be fluent in ASL to join the club. There's only, everybody, sometimes people feel like there's a limitation, like you have to be like engrossed in it or be an active member, but kids can take part and involve themselves in these committees even if they are not masters or they're not utilizing on a daily basis, so.
Exactly.
Fantastic meetings every time. Cut Feltman down from two hours to an hour thirty, but we'll be all right.
We did better this time.
He did.
Definitely did. I have to say, I mean, this was the second time we've had students come and present from the different clubs.
That's great.
And they were, they've all been phenomenal. I've been blown away both times, and I don't know if it's just how I set my expectations, but they would come with presentations, they'd come with handouts, like, they're prepared, they know what they're talking about. And then we had the kids who came and volunteered, and they're personable, and they're, they're smart, and they're just, just seem like really good kids, and it kind of, you know, you hear all this stuff about, oh, the future, how is it going to be with them, like, if they're all, like, there's a lot of kids like we have here in Man Olive out there who are doing this now, and they continue to grow and do these things. We're in good hands, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more thing to say. Sorry, I have one more thing to say. Our March 14th meeting is also supposed to be on mental health, and now that they just said that, I just thought maybe that is an idea that district-wide, we could do something for mental health, like together, or...
I love that idea. I actually was speaking to Mr. Robinson about how our focus in mental health needs to be a priority. I will say re, just because it's always been ever-present to really put at the, at the front burner. So, I, as I hear the various groups, I will probably be in touch with everyone to see if we can kind of coordinate as far as the topics discussed and really make a blast for all the families who may not necessarily attend your meetings to get a little more insight, even for yours. And we also have, you know, meetings with our PTOs from our elementary schools, and I know on the middle school also has an active, you know, group as well, so...
And we are so inclusive that it would benefit everyone for...
I love it.
...to be together instead of separate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure, thank you.
And just as, in addition to that, I know that ACES, or Acute Childhood Experiences, is a hot topic amongst public schools and organizations, and there may even be organizations out there that are providing grant opportunities for professional development or programs in schools, and might be worth looking into. Oh, fantastic.
First of all, Mount View PK meeting Wednesday. We started our referendum committee meeting, the first meeting was on February 6th. The attendants were Dr. Gales, Ms. Aquino, Dr. Banja, Ms. Libby, Mr. Miller, virtually, and myself. We received and discussed a spreadsheet of possible projects from our architect, Mr. Jim Frakerell. We also received a schedule of timelines that need to be met and were to go out for November, December referendum, and these timelines are very tight and critical. We asked the administration to prioritize the projects, so we know the importance of each to address our needs and financially figure out how many projects we can afford to do. We talked about applying for the rod grants to be able to eliminate some projects out of the referendum, and getting a rod grant means that we have to use our, some of our own capital reserve money, and then we get reimbursed by that. Further discussion gave thought to the state of mandating RKE, which, I don't know, I think you might have talked about that, I'm not sure. So, we have to keep that in mind, too. I started, I stated that whenever we do go out to a referendum, we really have to verify our needs to community, otherwise everything we're doing is for naught. Our next meeting is Monday, 2/13, which was today. Mrs. Narcisse and Mrs. Fenton have graciously said that they would give time and join the committee, too. And I'll tell you about the 2/13 meeting, which was today. In attendance today was Dr. Banja, Ms. Libby, Mr. Miller, Mrs. Narcisse, Mr. Robinson, Bill Robinson, myself, and our architects, Anthony, Jim Frakerell, and his son, Matthew Frakerell. Mrs. Fenton was away, she told me that she wouldn't be back in time for it. We went over the project worksheet and tried to prioritize what we believe we will need. We will rely very heavily on Dr. Banja for academic advice, and Mr. Miller for buildings and grounds, and of course, Mrs. Libby for financial. Our architect went over each item, and we decided to put the categories in the following category, priority, so. One, quality. Two, roofs. Three additions. And four and five were miscellaneous and cafeteria upgrades. We decided on the rod grant at this meeting, and it's going to be the middle school unit ventilators, and it'll be an action item put on at the 2/27 meeting. That would probably be about somewhere around 3 million, close to 3 million, right? Mrs. Libby will be, Ms. Libby will be putting together the figures for us that are going to impact our taxes with different scenarios, so that when we receive those figures, we'll better be able to understand what we can do. We will see if we can get some town officials, some education foundation members, and if there's anyone in the community who would like to join our committee, please contact me. Our next meeting will be 2/27, and we also scheduled a public discussion on Monday at 6:30 on 3/20.
Hey, Mrs. Shalachi, would you like to share how folks can reach you?
By Pony Express, Pony is the best way. No, it's, they can call me, got my store, they can call me at home, they can do whatever they want to do.
Anthony Shalachi.
They can meet me in ShopRide.
Anthony dot Shalachi.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Is that, that it?
That's it.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Mrs. Aquino.
Yes, I have two last reports. One, Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, we met February 1st at 7 o'clock in the evening. One of the things I just wanted to mention, I think I did mention to Dr. Banja that our town council representative, Alex Roman, requested our demographics report, so that the town can also use that along with us. We welcomed some new members. There were some updates. We have a new recreation assistant, her name is Bianca Marinelli. Our winter programs are still currently ongoing. Our, the spring programs are being worked on now, and will go to print in a few weeks. Our theme for 2023 is Inspire, and banners have been made for the municipal complex in Turkey Brook Park, which should go up soon. And we're working on a new camp program and agreements for new events in November and December, but there will be a camp this summer. I have one more thing. Can I just keep going?
Sure can.
Okay. So, Ed Foundation, since you so graciously mentioned them, I'm going to segue into that. As the newly appointed board liaison, I want to thank Mrs. Fenton for introducing me to Mr. Weiss, who is our president of the Education Foundation. Dr. Banja, myself, and Mr. Weiss met on Friday morning, and we discussed the Ed Foundation. They'll also be giving two $500 scholarships and presenting them. Mr. Weiss will be here himself on June 7th to give out those scholarships. And also, some additional funding has come into the Ed Foundation, and I'll be reporting that throughout the month and let everyone know what's going on, but we had a very good kickoff meeting. Mr. Weiss and I have been in contact a few times, as has Dr. Banja, so we feel like this is a very good movement forward, and we are ready to work with them and partner with them and get some money coming in for everybody, for our kids.
Great.
Yes.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes.
Zaire.
Just to kind of, the demographic study and the town looking to share it, is there any way we can talk about, at some point, maybe next time we do this, maybe splitting the cost with the town, if they're going to benefit from...
On the study?
Yeah. If they're going to benefit from our study that we paid for?
I do believe we shared with them the last time we had it done.
Okay, well, I'm saying in the future...
Maybe moving forward, maybe moving forward.
Sharing, or we could...
Yes, we can look at it.
To pay for the study.
So noted. Any other questions or comments from the board? Saying none, moving on. Public comments on action items. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to the board's discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Obusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. We are now open for public comments on action items.
Martin Wellsmo at 25 Woodcrest Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. Shocked. Regarding to the cameras for the school bus, it would be nice if we could get the township, if they're not giving us the money to maintain it, and maybe provide an extra officer in to do all the reports to take the stress off of Karefi in the school district. If the township's getting all the benefits, the expense shouldn't be all on the, on the school district, so maybe there's a way that we can offset that to take the burden off the school district, because Karefi's could be doing other things beneficial to the town than versus doing the job that the township's getting all the money for, because he gets paid by the school district, not by the police department. The other question I have is regarding the RFPs. Are you going out for RFPs for all vendors or just select vendors? And if so, do you have a list of what vendors you're going out for RFPs on?
At this point, we do not have a list.
Okay. Will you publish a list for the community to see when you do go out?
The list will be included in the agenda, yes.
Okay, all right, that's why I want to make sure. And then, in regards to action item for expenses from bills, I see on page five, we have Clubhouse Golf Center and Grill for $2,500, and then it says rental fee. What is that? Because it sounds like a restaurant charge.
No, I believe it's from the golf club at the high school, but I can confirm that with Mrs. Suplex.
Okay, all right, so that may be the rental for the golf club, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, it just says restaurant.
Yeah, we go off-site for several, I think it's kind of like a top golf, maybe sort of...
I know that they do use it for the driving range, Karefi though.
Yes.
Just going, because it came from a restaurant portion, that's why it was a little odd to see. And then, the next thing is, I see we have Manor Electrical Company, and it says Equipment Uniform Rentals for $28,000, and that's on page 11?
Yes, that is, we approved a project a year and a half ago, about, to put a generator at the dome. We've had to file three claims within a year due to damage at the dome from power outages, so the smart thing to do to make sure we maintain coverage is to rectify that, so we went out for a generator. Unfortunately, it was supply chain issues. We are still waiting for the generator, so in order to ensure that it didn't go down with power outages, we have been renting a portable generator through the contractor. So, that payment is for that generator through... The end of this month? The end of February.
It's only the parts that uniform rentals, that was a little question on that.
That's what it's for.
And then, the last thing I have, I see that we went to Motion Autobody, where we spent like $14,000, and I guess that's repairing something, but do we don't have insurance?
Repairing several trucks.
We don't have insurance that cover, is that maintenance?
No, they're, maintenance, it's normal wear and tear.
Because it says Autobody, that's why I was asking, not a repair shop.
That's all, the two that come on the trucks, right?
Motion Autobody, when I hear repairs for trucks, or repairs for buses?
Yes. Yeah, buses.
All right.
So, there's only so many things, especially from a bus standpoint, that the guys can do with what we have. One of the things I've talked to, actually talked to Mr. Miller about, what I'd like to look into the next year or so, is to actually purchase a lift, so that perhaps some of his guys can do some of the easier repairs in-house instead of going out, a lot cheaper.
Motion Autobody, does mechanics, or are they just...
No, it's the Autobody, motion, if it's motion...
It's Motion.
It's Autobody, so it's probably the buses.
Because there was an accident in December.
But that wouldn't be covered under like auto, we're self-insured, we don't have auto insurance?
No, we have insurance, but if it doesn't meet the deductible, and if it's on several vehicles, then you don't file the claim.
Yeah, because it was almost $15,000.
Yeah, but maybe it's probably more than one vehicle.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, so that would be...
The insurance claims are filed when the accident, where's it?
So, the insurance company doesn't pay the body shop directly? They reimburse the school in this case?
Right.
Okay, so that's opposite than how other businesses have done. Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
My name is Johanna Rizai, 8 Hampton Road in Flanders. Mr. Zaire, I believe you brought up some reference to the student handbook, okay, student handbook. And I know the kids keep being told that they have a copy of the handbook as part of their agenda. The kids don't get agendas anymore. So, at the high school level, and I'm here on the website for the high school, and when I go to click on the student handbook, it says it's in review. So, when we're asking, or you're asking the kids to refer to their student handbook, are they supposed to be referring to the Code of Conduct? If somebody can clear that up for us.
I can answer that question. Certainly, those are provided by electronically by the administration at the onset of the school year. What Ms. Aquino was referring to is that across the board from a K-12 perspective... What Mrs. Aquino was referring to is that across the board, from a K-12 perspective, we're looking to ensure that those handbooks are aligned from building to building to ensure continuity of expectations, so that's the alignment that we're talking about.
High school's not giving any handbooks. My boys, my boys don't, no, I'm on the?
I understand on the website, because the website was recently updated, so.
But they don't have any, like?
I know that used to be part of the agenda, I know what you're talking about, the spiral agenda, but my understanding at the onset of the school year, electronically, students are provided an electronic copy of it, not necessarily a hard copy, as was back in the agenda.
Okay, but I think my son said it was taken down, something about it was taken down, so if it's not there, are they supposed to be just referring to the Code of Conduct?
No, those are two separate documents. The Code of Conduct, and we're looking at the handbook. Typically, the Code of Conduct is included in the handbook, the handbook also includes, for example, expectations, as well as school hours, and you know, where to get the lunch, and you know, where you can get your counselor. So certainly, you know, our website was updated at the end of December, so we're in a process of working out the broken links, and I believe that's one of those areas, but if you're sharing that, that had not happened, you know, I'll certainly be sure to follow up with you.
Because I know with the handbook, I know Mr. Moore had mentioned that they were going to be working on it, so there.
I believe he's working on the Code of Conduct, but the handbook was something that was additionally?
Supposed to be in the works?
Yes.
And now he's out, so that's kind of on hold right now?
Yes.
Because I was supposed to be part of that committee to update the handbook.
Handbook or the Code of Conduct?
It's the student handbook.
We're supposed to update the student handbook?
Yes.
Okay, I'll follow up with Mr. Moore to inquire about that, as well as his support staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments on action items? Seeing none, close the public comments. Approval of monthly expenditures, Mrs. Narcisse.
I'd like to make a motion to, at the recommendation of the acting superintendent, to move items 7.1 through 7.4.
Second. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Narcisse? Yes, to 7.1 and 7.2, abstain on 7.3 and 7.4. Mrs. Wehmet?
Yes.
Mr. Chalachi?
Yes, with the exception of anything, jury boss.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes, to 7.1, 7.2, abstain on 7.3 and 7.4.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes. Mrs. Wehmet?
I'd like to make a motion upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent to move personnel action items, personnel action items, moving, sorry, 8-1 through 8-19.
Second. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Wehmet?
Yes, to all, abstain on 8-17.
Mr. Chalachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes. Mrs. Aquino, curriculum and technology.
Upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve action items 9.1 through 9.6.
Sure.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Abstaining 9.1, yes, to the press.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Wehmet?
Yes, to all, abstain on 9.6.
Mr. Chalachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
And Dr. Gales?
Yes. Mr. Zaire, finance and operations.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on the recommendation of the acting superintendent to move action items 10.1 and 10.2.
Second. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Wehmet?
Yes.
Mr. Chalachi?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes. Before we move to public comments, I am remiss, because we did not do policy, so, Mrs. Fenton?
I was going to mention that, we did not meet.
Okay. I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Public comments, anything pertaining to Mount Olive.
Hi, my name is Rich Miskowski, 1 Claussen Court, Bud Lake. I'm here on behalf of the aides. My son is a special education student, he's 17, he's a junior at the high school, and by and large, he's getting a great experience. But the aides is what really concerns me. We lost two more over the last couple of weeks, and when you look at the loss of an aide, you shouldn't look at just one person, you should actually look at probably four people. And so, really, we lost like eight people over the last couple of weeks. Those, maybe each one of you has an understanding about what these aides do, maybe you don't, maybe you should look further, maybe you should understand and appreciate what they do. They are superheroes, they really are. What they do is the job of four people, six people, depending on the student that they're with, you know, could be upwards of a whole team of people. They cover for each other, they look out for each other, they look out for our students when our students are kind of out there on their own. So, when I say that they are superheroes, I really mean they're superheroes, they do an incredible job. We can't afford to lose any more aides, because we are slim right now. We're down to the nitty-gritty. Losing two more aides, like we did the last couple of weeks, is really slim picking. Now, my son and the other kids, you know, we go, they go, and we leave him off at 7:15, some ungodly hour in the morning, and let them go to school, and we're rest assured that they are in a safe, secure place. We have to do whatever we need to do, from a monetary standpoint, from a support standpoint, from whatever standpoint, we have to make sure that our kids are safe, and that our aides are getting what they need to make sure that our kids are safe. The training, the money, whatever the case is, because we need to feel secure, and the fact that when we drop them off, they're in good hands. And right now, they're short, but let me tell you something, they're still doing a great job, but it's really stretched. So, whatever you need to do, please consider that, run that up the flagpole as far as you can, because they need some help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin Wellsmoore, 25 Woodcrest Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. As most of you may have heard this week, our state lost a young lady earlier this week who committed suicide during bullying and harassment in a school district. It was a tragic loss to our state, a young lady, because of an incident that happened in schools. And obviously, we also know what happened here in the past in our own school district. So what I'm asking our school district is to pay closer attention to the intimidation, harassment, and bullying that's going on, because that's what we count on to protect our children. Now, I've been blessed with my family, that we haven't really experienced much of that, but I know other people have in this township, and I think that needs to be firmly looked at. I've had a few families reach out to me recently, and I've reached out to the school about what's been going on there. So what I want is to make sure that our school district is taking these accusations and these things really serious, moving forward, and that they're not brushed under the rugs that may have happened in the past that cost us $750,000. Now, that school district down there is probably going to be paying in the millions for the loss of life and that video and all the other stuff. The superintendent there just resigned over the incident, but that's how serious these HIBs are. These kids are very fragile when it comes to bullying and social media now. We didn't have any of this problem when we were a kid, it didn't exist. But now, it's out there, and so I just want to make everyone cognizant, if you haven't seen the story of the young lady who took her young life tragically, you should look it up. And hopefully, that, when you go later on, go into closed sessions, that you may talk about that, and maybe what Mount Olive can do better and more, so that never happens in our town. Because that's nothing, no one ever wants to see a loss of a life. Secondarily, I sent an email to the whole board today, and it was mentioned my correspondence. And so, my correspondence was Board of Ed Attorney contract and open requests. I want to thank Lynn for what a great job she does in getting my open request to me, and the best manner that she can. But going over the contracts, I actually looked at the contract through the Board of Ed and our attorney. In that contract, I noticed in the past two years, he added a clause, indemnification clause to himself, which I'm sure came about from back in the lawsuit to protect himself, it makes sense. But we also want to put in there, in that contract, here's a discharge clause, discharge and withdrawals, all right? I received copies of the contract from Chek Price Smith &amp; King LP last week. After a careful review, I wanted to point out that you have options as a result of the attorney's inappropriate actions of sharing confidential emails with individuals who didn't have authorization to receive them, AKA a need-to-know. I'd like to remind you that he sent these emails from Mr. Gales to a personal email address without permission, which is a breach of contract with Chek Price Smith King LP. He also sent emails from Dr. Giordano's work from his employer to the same email address that he had nothing to do with Mount Olive, which I'm sure violates the contract of the school district there as well, in Mansfield Township School District. I want to make that noted, that these events occurred. Now, in the contract and discharge, the board members may remove him by majority of the vote of the full membership of the district of the law firm at any time. I'm hoping tonight might be that night. Number two, in the indemnification clause, to protect him from his actions. Well, in his contract, it says, paragraph shall not apply to determine the court comments of justification in the claims that was approximate result of SPKS gross negligence, malpractice, or wrongful misconduct. It appears that his willful misconduct and gross negligence is part of the Board of Attorney's, what he's done. And you have the grounds to remove him from those actions. I'm pretty sure, Mr. Gales, you didn't want him sending your private emails to someone else, I'm pretty sure Mr. Giordano didn't like it either. But I want the board to take this serious, and I will address this every single week until the board does, because I'm not going to let this go. I've also went to the other school districts where this has been affected too, okay? I expect everyone else here to be held to the higher standards, right? And I'm pretty sure you expect yourselves to be held to higher standards. The same goes for our board attorney. So, I also want to say that obviously there are some board members which I feel are conflicted in this matter. That means that there's seven members here that could vote to do something better for Mount Olive, and I do hope tonight that you're able to do that. Thank you, and have a good evening. Does anyone have any questions for me? Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Bill Robinson, Ten Patrick Court, Flanders. I've come here on a little different mission. I'm very interested in our referendum, and the reason I say that is because I know what happened after the last one. And inadvertently, we got a report on what happened afterwards. Dr. Zawicki had gotten an acquaintance of his to do some professional development for us, and it was about almost four years ago, I guess, and it cost us $40,000 for a six-week, I mean, six-day, I'm sorry, six-day professional development, and he was embedded in the district and so forth, and his, what he was supposed to do was teach our administrators how to really do, be a good, make this a good teaching place, and a place where you could be proud of. So anyway, he came in, I think it was roughly 18, the end of 18, and did this whole entire report. And many members of the board were not around at that time, and I wanted to give them a copy of the report, just so they all had, I got a copy for each board member, so you can remember what you saw. So anyway, that's all it is, I want to be, show some positivity, and I want to show you what happened, you know, and that we have to say, okay, the last time you gave us some money, we really used it properly. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Gil Mascatello, 44 Vista Drive, Flanders, New Jersey. I just had a question about the middle school sports. What's going on, what's the plan, thought process behind it, what's staying, what's going, just a general, what's going on with it?
I'll take that. Questions, so certainly, I believe there's some misinformation out there, let me reiterate, there is no elimination of our interscholastic sports, which means competitive against other school districts. What we're looking to do is infuse an intramural aspect of it to ensure that we reach a wider net of students. You know, as we are more, you know, comfortable with our proposal that we've worked with Ms. Soufle, as well as Mr. Kramer, we'll make that public, but really, at this point, what we're looking at is to enhance the offerings at our middle school, because right now, we do lose a number of our students because of the nature of, the rosters are so limited for certain sports. So this is by no means are we looking to eliminate the rosters that are able to attract a large number of kids and maintain, but we're looking to add some intramural sports, such as flag football, pickleball, you know, so other things that allow us to ensure that more kids are involved, because in our analysis conducted by Ms. Soufle and Mr. Kramer, so many kids are turned away from rostering on some of our sports because of the short number of spots available to them. So we're looking at, to ensure that we're adding some intramurals, so that we can have more kids involved.
So it's all additive, no reductions in any sports?
No, we're looking at, looking at a combination between interscholastic as well as intramurals, but at this point, we're going to have conversations as to what that looks like. But we're not looking at programs that, A, are able to accommodate entire rosters of students who try out. So certain sports, like for example, we have track and field, I'm looking at wrestling, they're able to maintain their entire roster, we're not looking at those particular sports, we're looking at ones that have such a small number of kids who get kept on the team compared to who get to try out.
All right. So you're like, all right, so it's fine that you're adding this stuff, but why would you eliminate the competitive programs? That's what I'm confused with.
I guess.
So you're going to eliminate some programs and add intramurals instead?
Yes.
It seems like, but why would you do that? Like, why, I mean, you're adding other kids, but there's kids, it just seems like you're, why, I'm just struggling with why that would happen, why you guys would be eliminating successful programs. We just built the best athletic campus going, and we're going to start, I mean, we don't have a pickleball court up there, we have basketball courts and soccer fields.
And exactly, and those are the sports we're looking to enhance as far as ensuring that they have an intramural aspect, because right now, some of those sports, right now, have one team, and you have, in which the rosters are looking at maybe 12 or 20, 15 kids, and when you look at the tri-outs ratio, the number of kids who actually get turned away is a rather high volume. So if we convert some of those sports to intramurals level, that allows more kids to participate.
So I think, if I might interject, the conversation is in preliminary stages?
Absolutely.
You're still reviewing.
It sounds like we're going to dilute the competitive aspect of the sports, just for a friendly let's play together, and just the whole competitive aspect's going to get lost in this.
At this point, this is, I'll be honest with you, the first time we had a conversation about this was last week, with Ms. Soufle and Mr. Kramer, as far as engaging, as far as what their proposal is. So at this juncture, we had a conversation with the board over the weekend to say what that proposal is, so we are still in the early planning phases of this. But understand that, you know, this idea of losing competitive on level sports, understand that we're looking at a very dynamic, as far as including tournament play for some of our students for the games that our sports are looking at to be intramurals. So this is a multi-faceted angle, and I encourage you, and we'll have a conversation with Soufle and Mr. Kramer, who's been really at the spearheading of making this change.
So, and that's why I look forward to it, but like, being additive is great, you know, pickleball, the sports have more activities for more kids, all good, but eliminating what's there, that's good, that's our championship teams that win stuff. Why would, it just seems like we're making it less competitive, and being less competitive as a school, as a program, right?
So can we say we don't know that yet?
Yes.
Because we're still in the preliminary planning stages, so.
No, that is, but like, I mean, if soccer's winning, boys and girls soccer are winning county championships, and we dilute it and make it intramurals, I mean, who does that help, I don't understand why we would punish those kids that are out there competing, representing the school and winning.
Okay.
Wrestling, wrestling, we have 30 kids in there, like, there's a lot going on there.
Right. So what, what we're trying to say to you is, if I'm hearing Dr. Banjia correctly, there is no list, right?
At this point, we're looking at.
That's fine, I'll leave it at B, but you just said we're going to reduce sports and add intramurals, and that's what's going to happen?
We had one committee meeting about it.
Yes.
One, maybe because it was a limitation. We had speakers come to the, a very small committee, and that's all we're at. The board doesn't know, we haven't presented it to the board. We've had one committee meeting, literally.
And I had, and I fielded phone calls with parents throughout the day, so I do encourage people to reach out to have that conversation, because that, at this point, it is preliminary. We're, this is the beginning phases of a conversation. And as I shared with you, the purpose of these conversations is to ensure more students are involved with sports, and that's, and that's the goal. So at this point, sir.
And I, no, that's fine, I understand, I'll be done. But like, my hope is that we're not adding more students at the risk of de-competitive, like, reducing the competitiveness of everything. Like, we could all go out there, like, if we could send everybody out there to go, like, jog together, more people are involved, and not everyone's getting the same out of it. It seems like we're just going to reduce the competitive aspect of all the sports for all the kids. So if we're going to add, if we're going to keep diluting it down, that's my concern, is the dilution down, everybody gets a trophy, no one's competitive anymore, and it's just no fun for any of the kids that are competing.
And we've, in that first preliminary meeting, and I know we're not going to engage you, Gil, but that first preliminary meeting, those concerns were all brought up, and it's ongoing conversation, there's been no decision made. Unfortunately, in our town, what happens is, it gets put out in the public, and Facebook happens, and, and so, there's been one meeting, and all those concerns you're saying now, and that first meeting, were brought up, and now, the people we, that brought the proposal to us as a committee are going to go back, we're going to have another meeting to get more information, we're going to come back, we're going to mewl it around more, there's been no decision.
Okay, that's why, that's why, that's why I asked what's going on, and I didn't say I heard this is happening. So you're, I'm just taking, you telling us that we're going to cut some, it's cutting sports around the table to add intramurals, to get more kids involved, and be less competitive in general. And that's the direction it's.
I wouldn't characterize it that, but certainly, as Mr. Quino pointed out, this is a beginning phase of a long-term conversation.
So I just get the information from you, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, closing public comments. Is there any old business from the board? Any new business? The favorite time of the evening. More comments, and we're going to start to our, we're going to start to our left with Mrs. Fenton.
I don't have any comments, but I want to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Mrs. Zire.
So for one, I think I'm probably going to acknowledge something that a lot of people are going to acknowledge today, is the loss of Bruce Bott to our district. If you walk around the schools, you will see numerous plaques with his name, and his accomplishments on it. It's actually one of my favorite Bruce Bott stories, is when I was walking the halls of a hospital, came across a plaque that said, "Donated by the Bruce Bott Foundation." Called his daughter, I said, "Did Dad have a hospital wing?" And yes. And the best, best part of that story is that nobody knew it. It kind of speaks to the man, and all the line that was going out the door speaks to the man as well. Then, I knew mostly the legacy, and it's, they don't make them like that anymore. So that was very sad to see. After that, bullying was around 30-something years ago when I was in high school. It is around, it is something nobody takes not seriously. We've seen the tragic events that can happen from it. So we, as a district, will do everything we possibly can to address that. That's really all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Giordano.
No comment, Mr. President.
Mrs. Leavitt.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Robinson for a great presentation, even though some people may thought it was a little bit long. And just thank you to staff, always doing a phenomenal job. Mr. Creefy, Mr. Miller, just seeing all that money that, you know, that comes back to us, which is, oh, it should be. Also, about Mr. Bott, yes, there was like, it was like, one woman in the, in Weber's funeral home had said, Levers, Weber's, Levers, goodness, Grills. She said, "It's like the Disney line for Bruce Bott, because you went in, and then you went around a room, and then you went around the other side, and you thought you were almost there, and that you still weren't there." And that is, that's a beautiful legacy to someone when you see something like that, and when Deacon Tony got up and talked about him also, that is, you know, it's nice to have that legacy associated with us, which is nice. And I came on just as he came off, so I know there are, you know, Mr. Stolochi and Mr. Giordano were here when he was here at the time. And again, thank you to staff, thank you to everything that you do. Thank you to the kids for making us proud. You know, when you have the Eagle Scouts here, you always see the different accomplishments here. You know, Jen Chertino there was talking about, and I, you know, I saw that too. It was like, oh my God, listen to these students talking. You know, you're like our best ambassadors for anybody, for parents, incoming freshmen coming in. But again, thank you to staff, and thank you to everybody here. I like Mount Olive.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Melendez.
Well, I attended the wrestling tournament, and I would like to congratulate the Mount Olive High School wrestling team, as they captured the New Jersey Section 1 Group 4 Championship. And furthermore, congratulations to Mr. Fellini. He was inducted at the tournament into the Modus County Wrestling Hall of Fame, so congratulations to Mr. Fellini. I had also the opportunity to attend the San Shortest Night Art, that was for lower grades. I was K-2, second grade, and it was fascinating, seeing those little kids' arts creations in exhibition, and all the parents, was a very big turnout. So my congratulations to Mr. Rick Heckman for a fabulous exhibition. Also, I attended the, I'm sorry, I believe this belonged to another section, but I'm going to present it. I attended the Mount Olive Middle School PTO meeting last Wednesday, and Mr. Feldman presented a great presentation for the eighth-grade students, parents. He presented all the scheduling, all the different important dates that the rising freshmen will have to be looking for, especially next week, which is around February 20. They are going to be receiving the form for them to put down the elective that they are looking on the courses. So please, parents, pay attention to that communication. It's going to be sent also by email, and all the presentation also is going to be attached, I think, to that email. Another important date is going to be on March, where all the elective will be, the high schools presented, and all the teachers for all the, those electives are going to be there. So you will have the opportunity to go with your kid and see what is what elective about. So get involved with your kids, go over there and send questions. He is willing to answer any questions you may have about the scheduling and going to the transition for the high school. And thank you, Dr. Feldman, for a great presentation. And happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Mrs. Narcisse.
So I wanted to say congratulations to Eagle Scouts. I know most of them have left. I happen to be the daughter of an Eagle Scout, so I know the time and the effort and the dedication that they put in. Most of them don't become Eagle Scouts, so they're in high school, so they dedicate much of their youth, and then their projects are amazing, you know, contributions to the community. I want to also say, I got the pleasure of attending our Tri-M concert, which was fully run by the Tri-M council, and apparently, we have our own boy band, so I was very excited to see a group of men do Voice to Men, and completely, this 40-something-year-old was fangirling, watching them perform. They were amazing. So we have some really talented students. I want to say congratulations to the wrestling team as well.
Thank you. Mr. Stolochi.
Yes, I would also like to recognize Bruce Bott. Bruce and I go back to the third grade together. We grew up together, we went to Duke High School, and at our 10th reunion, 10th year reunion, Bruce had five children already. We always teased him and said, "Boy, you gave your school tax money worth it to this town." So Bruce was a highly, highly intelligent, highly personal, highly generous person. If you look at St. Clair's Hospital, you'll see his name up there, Bruce Bott Wing. He has done so much for so many, he served the board well for many years too. The other thing I'd like to address is what Rich said back there about AIDS. I've been after AIDS, as you know, for a long time. I think if you look back just to the minutes in the November, December meeting, I was talking about AIDS again. We're not alone, though. All the districts are having problems getting bus drivers with AIDS. We would like to get AIDS. But I've also said, we do have to take a look at the salary structure of more than $14 an hour for an AIDS. You get that in McDonald's. So, I mean, that's the first thing we have to do, but I know from a personal experience, because my wife taught kindergarten for, she taught for 30 years, but 30 of them were kindergarten. She couldn't leave the room if she didn't have it. You know, with AIDS in there, or if someone got sick, what is she supposed to do? These, these teachers, especially in the early childhood grades, they're up against the wall there. I mean, they just don't have the time to do anything. They definitely need AIDS. We would love to get it, but we also have to start thinking about a little bit better pay for them, and hopefully, you know, we can start getting some more AIDS. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Quino.
And speaking of AIDS, we did just have our first negotiation meeting, so hopefully, we will be able to get some more AIDS. I just wanted to congratulate our Eagle Scout recipients, even though they're not here. I think that's a huge accomplishment. And happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. And I'll round out our group with also congratulating the Eagle Scouts. Myself, along with Dr. Banjia, had the pleasure of attending the Eagle Scout ceremony for Bryce Abramson a couple of Sundays ago, and I was just truly amazed at the community support, the dedication that it takes to become an Eagle Scout. And one of the things that I shared with the group is that not too many people can do that, but to become an Eagle Scout really talks about the problem-finding, problem-solving skills that kids develop that can transcend any academic or career field of their choice. So I believe it was Mr. Zire who said, "When I see Eagle Scout on the resume, it gets pushed up to the top." So congratulations to those young men and their families. And thinking about the referendum, you know, I'm very excited about it, and one of the things that, that we have to do as a school community is not just think about the high school for today or tomorrow, we have to be forward-thinking about what instruction, teaching, and learning will look like 10, 15 years down the road. And how do we design our building with this forward-thinking design in mind? So I'm going to really encourage the committee and the community members who join the committee to really think about flexible design, forward-thinking, so that what we do now is going to pay dividends for decades to come, and hopefully, we won't have to revisit this for quite some time. So good luck, Mr. Stolochi, and the members on the committee. I wish you well, because I believe it's going to turn out well. I also agree regarding the AIDS, and I hope that negotiations turn out very well, because relationships are important. The relationships that AIDS develop with students, they are important. They can make the difference between a student being turned on to school and reaching his or her highest potential and aspirations, or being turned off. And we have some amazing AIDS, we need to get more, but the ones who are here, we need to ensure that they are well-compensated, that they have opportunity for growth and advancement in their field, and that we're not losing them to other districts that are providing more opportunity. So good luck to the negotiating team. I'm sure you're going to do well. We have some, I don't know if, Dr. Banjia, you shared your good news, I guess you shared it about CUSAC, is that? All right, I'll let you share that, I won't steal your thunder. And I did have the opportunity to attend the service for Bruce Bott. I wasn't on the board when he was on the board, but I heard a lot about him and his impact on the board and in the community, so I wanted to go and pay my respects. And you could tell the legacy that he left behind, because it took 45 minutes to go just about 10 feet. And that was the outpouring of love and respect that the community has for Mr. Bott. And the only thing that I would ask is that as a community, if we could give people their flowers while they're here, and let them know that we appreciate them while they're here, I think that would make a world of difference in the lives of so many people. There's so much negativity and hurt and pain that's going on in this community across the country, and let's not wait until we gather at a funeral service to say how much we care about a person. Let's just extend ourselves a little bit. We are a caring community. Let's, let's show who we really are. And on that note, I'll say happy Valentine's Day to everyone who celebrates, and I will turn it over to Dr. Banjia to close us out.
Certainly, I do have some good news. We had our CUSAC visit by the county last Wednesday, in which we had our county superintendent along with various other group members from the county to review with us our various CUSAC entities, and they were, I'm very impressed with the work that we do here in the district, certainly in the areas of finance, governance operations, was visited in January, as well as personnel and curriculum and programming. So certainly, that's a testament to the hard work across this team. I would especially like to thank Ms. Lynn Jones, Gail Libby, Mr. Matt Robinson, and Dr. Kreider for their time during that visit on Wednesday. It was a full-day visit, but I believe that the team walked away showing how wonderful and hard-working our district is. In addition to that, you know, I recognize as a community, you know, in the next couple of months, there'll be a lot of conversations taking place, whether it be referendum, what we're talking about, you know, looking at middle school sports. Understand that everyone on this table is, has, are willing to listen, right? We're trying to be transparent in order to engage the community at large. So understand, if there are any questions that people do have, please solicit us and reach out to us. You know, as I shared, I'm on the phone constantly throughout the day in order to ensure that we have those lines of communications are open. So certainly, people in this room, those who are watching via our YouTube channel, certainly, the board members, including myself, Ms. Libby, are here to make sure that we are respectful and insightful of what's going on in the community, because, you know, as I know, this community has a rich history of excellence, and certainly, going back to that demographic studies, that's where having a lot of people move here, right? It's indicative of a high-performing district, and we continue, want to continue on that path of excellence. So thank you so much, and most importantly, happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you very much, Dr. Banjia. And seeing that we are not going into closed session, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Take that moment. She'll move a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. We are adjourned.